I'd like to call the Lynn Mar Board of Education Special Session to Order. And can you please determine a quorum?
Here.
Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Walt.
Here.
And Weaver. A quorum is present at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. A motion to adopt the agenda, please.
We'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, before we get started here on our special session, I just want to welcome everyone back. It's nice to see everyone for real. And with that, we will begin on our special session of which we are going to discuss our return to Learn Planet and Shannon. Go for it.
Let me remove my mask at least while I'm speaking right away, just so I want to make sure the audience that's joining us via YouTube can hear me. I'm not quite sure since this is our first time doing a double session in person and via YouTube, how that's going to work. So I'll take the extra precaution, make sure everybody can hear hopefully. So I'll echo what Sandra said, it's great to be back in person again in a board meeting. It's different, but that's okay. It's kind of the reality of our world right now. So I'm sure that's what our students and staff are probably feeling as well as we approach the start of the school year. So I'll start off our discussion today, just kind of a brief overview of kind of where we've been the last couple of weeks since we last had a board meeting. And then I will stop talking eventually and let board members join into that piece as well. So first of all, our return to Learn Plans continue to evolve, but our focus on safety, flexibility, and choice still remain as our priorities. With the Governor's proclamation on July 17th, we've been limited essentially down to two options for return to Learn Plans for the school year, not three like we originally started with. And the online option is essentially off the table unless we get a statewide directive or an approved waiver to do so. After a lot of conversations and listening to people and reflection and monitoring of our current COVID status in Lynn County, I'm recommending three changes from our original plan that we talked about a couple of weeks ago to ensure that we provide the safest possible atmosphere for our students and our staff. I'm gonna highlight those three things here with a little bit of context as well to try to explain what those three changes would be. First of all, I recommend that all schools will start the school year in a district-designated hybrid, so hybrid option B in our draft that we had out earlier, under an A/B model for the first two weeks of the school year. In essence, that would be a soft start concept where it gives everybody a chance to come back to school in person, but also in a safer environment of, I'll be able to lower our class sizes down to a better number to do some social distancing. The intent would then be to, after Labor Day, which would be the end of the two weeks, to return to more of the full onsite model, but the hybrid could be extended based on our circumstances as time goes on. I won't get into a ton of detail on the hybrid model, but just very simply so everybody understands what I'm referencing, in this A/B model, it would be essentially every other day for students in school. So we would split the district in half and be consistent across each building, so kids would be either in A group or B group, and they would alternate days of school that they are in session versus at-home learning. Hybrid allows for better social distancing if it takes place. It does relieve some of the stress that I think our families, our students, and our staff are feeling upon returning to school after several months away. It does give our staff an opportunity to really build relationships with kids, reconnect again in smaller groups, and also to teach them a lot of the safety-focused things that we need to do to start a school year. Simple things from face coverings to social distancing and practice that in smaller groups. Hopefully also help our students feel more comfortable and confident when they return to school as well. And then from a system level, it really gives our buildings the opportunity to work out their new procedures, their new protocols, in a smaller setting to be more successful hopefully, and also adapt to changes with a little bit smaller scale as well. So the bottom line for the safe start, the soft start concept is really just give us everybody to have a transition time back into school as time has really gone for almost five months now. And then the final piece I'll mention on that hybrid model is, under the current law that we have available to us, this is the safest option we have for us to start back in school. And again, back to our priorities of safety, flexibility, and choice, that was obviously a priority. The second change I'd recommend from our original draft of plans is that our Lynn Mar High School would continue to operate in this A/B hybrid model beyond the two weeks off-start and would continue for at least the first quarter of the school year, which would take us until October 23rd is the scheduled end of the first quarter. There are several reasons the high school will be extended in this hybrid model. I'll include a couple of the key ones. The size of the high school alone makes it very challenging to social distance. We're estimating 2,260 students. With staff added in, we're approaching 2,400 individuals in that building. That makes it challenging to social distance throughout the building, but especially areas like the lunchroom, hallways during transitions, and some of our larger classrooms and study center areas as well. Second reason why the high school will be a little bit different scenario, the high school has not been really fortunate enough to benefit from the opening of Hazel Point and Boulder Peak Intermediate Schools this year. Our other elementary and middle schools all will see an increase in space in their buildings this year because of losing one grade level in each building, and they will also gain additional space, which allows them additional flexibility in their buildings to spread things out and take advantage of the space that's there. And then the final piece I'll mention for the high school rationale, a hybrid model is beneficial to us in a lot of ways to improve social distancing, but we know it does not typically work for families, primarily for childcare reasons as well as being in school all the time. But the impact at a high school level is less than it would be at the elementary or middle school level on the family aspect there. I'll also just acknowledge that it's always nice to have all of our buildings in exactly the same structure and schedule, but sometimes that's just not possible. For example, this spring, our high school was able to do the required online learning, but the pre-K8 level, we were in the voluntary optional learning model as well. So different circumstances, different situations, we need to adjust accordingly. The third recommendation I would make isn't quite as significant as the other two, but is equally as important from a safety aspect. Our original plan for face covering is all staff and students first through 12th grade, and we now recommend that we add kindergarten to that list as well. I feel like we can do some things to really teach kids proper procedures at that level too. So everything else that was stated in our initial draft plans, from requirements to mitigation efforts, and our return to Learn Plans would still be in effect, besides these three things that we have just highlighted for you. So with that, I will hand it back over to Sandra and the board for conversation, questions that you may have, and we'll open up the more of the discussion part of the time.
What I thought we would do is just go person by person around, and you could ask questions, ask for clarifications that you still need, or things that you've heard about that you want to make sure are brought up. And then after that, maybe I'll do this so you can hear me a little better, and after that, then we'll go back around and state that, how we feel about endorsing what Shannon is proposing for our district at this time. So Barry, would you like to start for us, please?
I really don't have any real strong opinions to add. I guess I would just, from a confirmation standpoint, and maybe I'm getting ahead of the curve a little bit, but I feel the leadership, and I've told Shannon that and I've told Sandra that, I feel the leadership of the district that's done a tremendous job. You exhausted as many options as you can with the moving target that you have. And more questions might pop up as I go, but I just really feel that you've done a nice job, and I'm open to hearing other discussion if you would.
Okay. We'll move on to Rachel.
I have a couple of questions. Has anything changed in terms of sports? Are people who opt to do virtual learning eligible to play in sports, practice, et cetera, et cetera? It's my first question. I don't know if you want to go ahead and answer.
Yeah, I'll try to address that because I may forget any questions you may have. Two pieces there that I'll address, one, I'm glad you mentioned the online learning piece of it, because our other hybrid model is the family choice model. That is not impacted by any of these decisions. I should have mentioned that. I did not. That option for families would still be in place. And then second part of your question, or the first part of, I guess, that you asked was the athletic options. We are still awaiting some guidance from the high school athletic associations as far as what their expectation, what their guidelines will be. We thought we'd get some more information today. I did not see that before we started this meeting as well. So we're kind of on a wait-and-see method, or mode at this time on the state level for the high school organizations. As far as the lower-level athletics, middle school, we have some meetings scheduled to talk about what does that look like if that happens this year, what does that look like for us?
So is it their guidance at this point that has led us to, you know, up until this point, say that if you are in the virtual option, you can't participate in sports?
Yeah.
Is that what's driving that decision as it stands today?
I'm not sure if that's what's driving it, but yes, if a student is in one of our family choice models, they would be able to participate in athletics, co-curricular activities, if that ends up happening across the state as well.
Okay.
We're still waiting to see if that actually, if it happens, and then what does it look like if it does happen too.
Okay. So at this point, if people choose a virtual option, they are, are or not allowed to participate in sports?
They are.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. I think there's a lot of confusion about that.
Okay.
So I think that's something that, that we should try to clarify a little bit, because I think that people think that if you choose a virtual option, you can't participate in sports.
Is it the confusion just sports or all curricular activities?
Um, I don't know. I've heard all. Okay. Maybe it is all. I mean, it seems to me like just in the reading of the, whatever went out, that it may be a little confusing.
Some of it might depend on whether or not that co-curricular activity requires classroom time.
Okay.
Because we do have some that-
Well, that sort of makes sense.
Would require classroom time or like for you to be onsite, if it's like, you know, like some of the arts programs, so.
Right. But I think that that may be driving people's decision one way or the other, and I hate to think that, you know what I mean, that that's the driver of whether parents feel like they can, you know, keep their kids home or do the hybrid learning.
Just wanted to make a quick comment on that.
Okay.
I think part of the, on the athletic side of it, and that's why I think Shannon said we want some direction from the state, because some of that has to do with eligibility more so than us making a decision whether we can play sports or not, right?
Correct. Yep. And the deadline for the family choice model, we have set for August 11th, which is two weeks from tomorrow, and that's not an accident. That is set after our next school board meeting as well. So in case there are other updates or information, things continue to change, and hopefully have more guidance from the state by that time as well. So try to set that as late as we could and still give us time to staff and plan for it as well.
Okay. My second question was just about the hybrid for two weeks at the elementary level. I just think, I'm a little, I just have a little bit of concern, and I think I've expressed that to you, just about if, what if things don't change in two weeks and then we have to extend it, and people are sort of not really able to, you know, make any long-term plans, they're planning their life out in two-week chunks, you know, that could be really difficult, as opposed to just saying, okay, we're all going to do a quarter in the hybrid model. You know, it allows a little bit more planning, I think. And I can see the other side of that as well. I just, I think that the numbers are not going in our favor moving forward. So it's hard for me, if we're making this decision based on numbers today, then we should, you know what I mean, that it's hard for me to see how the circumstances change that we're going in the opposite direction, you know what I mean, and having kids go back to school. So I'm just, you know, I just want to be clear about the rationale there. And then my last thing is just, are masks going to be 100% required as opposed to strongly encouraged? I really would like to see that they are 100% required, and that's my understanding, but, you know, I want to be clear on that because I've gotten messages and emails asking about that. There seems to be some confusion there, and I, then I would say, if you're going to require kindergarten to have masks, why not require it from preschool? I think kids are pretty adaptable, and I think, you know, it may be challenging at first, you know, learning a new skill, and it's something different, and having something on their face, but I sent Cara a video of some babies who, over in the eastern part of the world, who are wearing these masks, and if you try to take them off, they get like really mad, and they put them back on because it's just sort of what they're used to. So I think, you know, small children are very adaptable. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Let's continue. Rick?
Okay. I had similar questions from people about this, the extracurriculars, but some of my questions that I got from parents were extended to specials and electives, especially at the high school level. If they opt for virtual learning, are they still allowed to come in and do band? Or are they still allowed, like if there's this, like an elective course that we don't have an online option, can they, can they opt to do primarily virtual and then come in for specific classes? Will we have that flexibility with high school students?
So you're going back to the family choice option again. As of right now, our plan is to not have that happen. The rationale behind that is the choice to stay home is for safety reasons. So if you are choosing that, we fully respect that, but then to come in out of the building anyway seems to kind of negate the rationale behind that option.
So if you choose the family choice model and your student is in band or choir, they can't participate this year?
At least not in person. We have to figure out the virtual option for that.
And then when will we be able to show people what family choice model looks like? Because I've had a lot of questions about, people are interested, but they don't know what it looks like, so they don't know what they're signing up for, and they want to know, like what does the schedule look? I mean, it's a big choice to make, and to just say virtual without actually knowing what that looks like, that's kind of hard for people. So when will we know more about what that looks like?
We are working on that as we speak. I don't want to give a hard deadline on that just because of, it's going to look different for a kindergartner, for example, than it does for a sixth grader, than it does for a junior. And that's the difference right there is what we're still trying to sort through to make sure we're not giving people false information on that as well.
Okay. So in looking at the hybrid, I have to agree with Rachel that I'm concerned about a soft start and then transitioning PK through eight back to full in-person. It is hard on people's schedules. I like the idea of everybody doing first quarter. If that's what we're committed to at the high school, then I think that we should commit to first-quarter hybrid. It is safer. It keeps our class sizes lower. It alleviates some staff concerns about size. If we can reduce some stress and anxiety by giving them smaller class sizes and reducing the population of the building, I think that that's going to improve learning, especially, I think, at the elementary level, when you're talking about trying to manage. You told me, right now, we're looking at an average class size of 23, which is kind of normal. That's not really reduced. If you think about wrangling 23 elementary kids and trying to say, please don't touch so-and-so, 23 of them, please keep your masks on, and trying to get them to learn. Whereas if we do hybrid, 12 to 13 kids at a time, that's closer to the guidelines of groups of 10 people. It's easier to manage, it's easier to social distance. I've tried to imagine those middle school and elementary classrooms with 23 kids spread out. I'd like to see it in person, because in my, I can't do it in my head. I don't, I don't see how that works. So I agree with Rachel on that. I think that we should think about extending that. And I'd also like to hear about the metrics that we're going to put in place for when we know we need to move from one phase to another or to start thinking about that waiver. I think it's going to come faster than we think it is, and I don't appreciate the hurdles that our lovely governor has put on us to keep people safe, but I think we need to have a plan in place for when we are going to do the waiver.
Two things I'll follow up with you there quickly as well. One, as far as the waiver goes, we've been told by the Department of Education, if we were to apply for the waiver for online learning only, we should expect, if it would get approved, it'd be only for days and not weeks or months, not a long time period. Now, that may change, but that was the guidance we received from them last week. And as far as the question about, is two weeks for elementary and middle school long enough? That's a question we need to continue to monitor and look at as we approach the first day of school. Right now, we're two weeks out from teachers starting, we're four weeks out from kids, we're six weeks out from Labor Day if we, after the two-week time period is up as well. I'm certain of very few things in this COVID world, but I am certain that things will change a lot between now and then, and we need to make sure to keep monitoring that. We are supposed to get new guidance from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health next week for guidance for schools to help determine when you should be looking at a hybrid or when you should be making a request for online, when you should be looking at onsite with all students as well. They said the first week of August is when that would come out, so we hope that guidance will be beneficial for us with some specific criteria to help us consider and make an educated decision, because this is not something any of us is familiar with doing in the past. So any guidance we can get from the experts, we would greatly appreciate that.
Can I, I just want to interject one thing, which is to say that I'm not saying we should or shouldn't have it for the first quarter necessarily. I'm saying whatever our rationale is to, to the soft start should be extended. We should be consistent with that rationale, you know, wherever we come down on it. And then I didn't hear, if you had answered, and I may just not have heard it, on the mask?
Oh, no.
Is that, is that going to be, you know, unequivocally required?
Yes.
To save certain medical conditions?
Certain medical conditions, like you said, yeah, they will be a requirement, not a strongly encouraged. There may be times during the day where, there will be times during the day where a student can remove the mask for a break if they're properly socially distanced or outside, something like that, but in general, yes, it is a requirement.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I just have one, one more general statement. If we are truly looking at, I know our hands are tied. Like if, if our hands weren't tied, I'd be sitting here arguing that we should start 100% online, but that's, that's gone, that's off the table, so I'm not going to argue that point. If we want to keep our kids in the buildings for as long as possible, and I know that's the goal, keeping class sizes reduced is the way to do it. So that's where my strong opinion for the hybrid through the first quarter comes from. But I looked up some numbers today just because there's this question about the impact on kids and how they get it. And kids are starting to get it, and they're, they're starting to get it much, at much higher rates because they're starting to come into public, they're getting ready for school. So Florida now has, and they're in the same risk category as us, I know they have a higher population, but they're a red state just like us. They went from 23,000 positive cases in kids on July 16th, and now they have 31,000 as of last Friday. Tennessee just had 7,500 kids test positive, and the latest research states that children ages 10 to 19 transmit the virus just as easily as adults. And it's not that they don't get it, it's that they're underestimating the numbers who are testing positive because we haven't been testing kids, because they've been quarantined by their families since March. Here in Iowa, our last meeting was July 13th, we had 35,462 positive cases in Iowa, and as of yesterday, we have 42,000. So since our last meeting, talking about the best way to go back, the safest way to go back, we've had 6,500 new cases in the state. And every medical expert says that while kids, we should try and reopen safely, we should, smaller classes, smaller groups, keep them in pods, don't let them move around. And the survival rate is high for kids, I'm not going to deny that, but now that we've been five months into this and they're starting to be able to look at the people who have survived, they're, they're surviving with damage to their lungs, to their skin, to their heart, to their kidneys, to their brain, to their nervous system, long-term effects that this is just now starting to show from people who are being released from the hospital. So I just want to say, I know our hands are tied and we can only do so much, but we can make a decision to keep as few people in our buildings at one time as possible. And we can protect our teachers and the rest of our staff and our students by the hybrid model. And I also want to say that I, I recognize that it's hard for parents to juggle and have, not have their kids in five days a week, but if we can have them in the school three days a week or two days a week for longer, I think that's the way to go. So that's where I will leave it for now.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
Sorry. You know, we, we as, we as an organization, we as a school, we're here to educate all children. And if we start limiting the number of classroom hours and we start limiting the face-to-face classroom, and that's my opinion, I think we're damaging some children, and I, and I can just about guarantee that some kids coming in this fall are already going to be struggling and behind. The second thing is, sorry to say, this is a way of life now, and we're having to adjust. And you guys have made the comment that children are starting to get used to it, and yes, the teachers are going to have their hands full, because, you know, I'm constantly fiddling with mine, and I wear it all day, every day. Kids will too, and it's going to happen. But I'm, I am really, really concerned economically by locking down, again, that it will affect family income, family career moves, the economics of a family, and a number of other pieces. And I don't want to sacrifice people for that, but the number of teachers that I've talked to, it amazes me, they're just chomping to get back in that classroom too. There are some people that are cautious, and we're all cautious. I remember the first couple of weeks I was back in my office, it was a scary feeling because I didn't know if I wanted to be in contact with people or not. But, but even if we keep, do the, do the hybrid or whatever we do, children are not going to stay home. They're going to be out and around the world, they're going to be out doing stuff with other kids. Even when we were locked down this spring, the sporting facilities and the event centers and everything, where some of them were quite busy because the kids are in there getting ready for baseball or softball or whatever it was. So I guess I've been very fortunate as a family that I have not been exposed to this, and I think in our community, we, our numbers are smaller and we get kind of immune to it. So the numbers you were showing us from Florida are very well taken. You know, I have a sister down in Houston, Texas, and they are scared to death with all of those pieces. But we, we still have to, and I think probably the biggest word yet, and Shannon has used it quite often, is you've got to be fluid. Because yes, it will change next week, and it will change the week ahead, but, but it's kind of interesting when you're out and about and what people are hearing on the street on what we're going to be doing, it's kind of interesting. Trying to keep my opinion to myself, and it's kind of interesting what they're reading and what they're hearing and what they're wanting to do. So that's just a feeling, and we can, we can hash it all day, and it's going to be a challenge, but, but I just kind of wanted to make that comment as well, just following this.
Thank you, Barry. Cara?
Okay. So my first question is, after the soft start concept piece, after the first two weeks, you had mentioned like, at those levels, K through eight, we pulled a grade out of each building because the new buildings are opening, but repeatedly we talked about how Indian Creek was going to be at capacity. So I guess what steps have been taken at that building specifically? Is it that we've left the portables? Like, can you kind of elaborate on that specific building? Because that one really continues to be an outlier as far as population goes.
Yep, and the portables are still there, if you've noticed, if anybody's driven by. Partly as a backup plan, just to make sure we had space, not just in Indian Creek, but across the district. And we had a feeling it might need some extra flexibility this year when the school year started. So both those portables will be there all year. Mr. Krachmar's been working on plans to use those portables throughout the day to help spread things out in the building as well. So that will be one way to help spread things out in Indian Creek specifically. And the second thing is, we have a relatively smaller kindergarten class coming into Indian Creek again this year, which is two years in a row, which I'm still surprised that either one of those classes are smaller based on our growth in the area. We have seen that two times now as well, so that'll be one less section in Indian Creek as well. So there'd be a couple of different ways to get some space there. Of all the buildings we have, elementary, middle school, Indian Creek probably seemed the least flexibility of growth, but they still have some options there to take advantage of.
And then there obviously has been talk about busing, and busing, bus capacity will be reduced. Have you looked at like what that looks like? I assume we're still going to bus everybody that gets busing, that we're not going to have families that are told that they can't ride the bus. So can you maybe talk a little bit about what that will look like?
Yep. Correct. We have some families that we think will choose not to bus this year, that'd be their choice, and will not happen. So that would be one way to reduce it. And the hybrid model, obviously, because right now our targeting is 60% capacity for bus routes is what we're looking at. bus routes is what we're looking at. Hybrid model will even lower that significantly more because it would in essence be half of the normal route each day during that time period. And the other advantage we have going for us this year is the decision that the board made pre-COVID to go three-tier start time for us did give us a lot more flexibility busing-wise this year with a little bit shorter routes and a little bit less students on there as well. So that is an unintended benefit we've had from that as we approached COVID as well. So, but as far as will we tell families we would not bus them, no, that's not.
Right. I didn't anticipate that, but you know, like Barry was saying, like people make up their own solutions, so I just wanted to be clear about it. And then I guess to that end, it's a lot easier to enforce masks when there are so many more adults in the buildings. Do we anticipate like having somebody additional to the bus driver on routes where we think it might be an issue or, because we'll have to enforce, that'll probably be the hardest place to enforce, I would think.
No, we, we do have riders on a lot of our buses, not every one of them. Yeah, we definitely will target riders where we think they're needed, whether that's just number of students or mask challenges or length of routes. Yeah, those riders would still be, they might have a little different responsibility this year of mask patrol reminders, but, yep.
Be a little bit easier if that's all the enforcing they have to do compared to what normally. And then can you talk about what lunch looks like in the hybrid model, not necessarily for the students in the buildings, but when my child is not at school?
We briefly talked about that, we started talking about that this morning actually, in brainstorm, what does that look like? First of all, would we provide meals for students that are not in session that day every, every other day? So we started that conversation, if we, one, can we do that? How would that look if we are able to? So we're in the early stages of just sorting through that right now.
I know that wasn't one that I had prepared and let you know ahead of time that I was going to ask about it, it just kind of popped up while we were talking through it.
No, it's, several have thought about it over the weekend, thinking, well, that's another unique circumstance with a hybrid that we wouldn't have in other models.
The students that have opted online and the students that maybe are not going to school that day, I think it would be important that we be able to address what we're doing, if anything. And then the last note that I had written down, I know when we had talked about it initially, the number of kids that had already signed up for the family choice model was like significantly lower than the survey results would have indicated that we would have expected. Have we kind of seen that increase and trickle in? Do we anticipate kind of having to say repeatedly like this is the deadline, if you're going to sign up, we really need you to let us know? Because I think that some of the concerns about the number of kids in the classroom could be alleviated with the soft start model if we had a better idea of who were, who was not going to choose to send their kids to school.
Yeah. The numbers of the family choice model continue to climb, but not at a very quick rate. But I do wonder as time goes on, if those numbers will ramp up as people are starting to sort through their decisions and their personal schedules and then also as we finalize our plans, that will have an impact either one way or the other, I think, as well on those numbers. So, and then obviously, the more families that choose that option, the less students we have in for either onsite or the hybrid model for our class size as well. So that's where that choice becomes a big, a big reason for families and for us as well.
I assume that the 23 kids per class average is assuming that like nearly everybody is going to school?
Correct. We'll take, I'll give you a little more detail on the, for elementary specifically, not going into the middle school numbers yet. We have in essence 35 sections across the district between kindergarten and fourth grade, seven buildings, five level, our grade levels each building. So of those 35 grade levels, 13 of them have less than 21 kids in the class already. 19 of them have between 21 and 25, and only three grade levels across the district have more than 25 right now. And that is before we take any students out for the family choice. We haven't removed any students from those lists yet as well. So those averages and numbers will only go down in that scenario. And then we, we anticipate we'll have some staffing adjustments we're going to have to make as we approach the start of the school year. If those numbers don't balance out across the district, we'll have to make some adjustments potentially as well, so.
The opposite conversation than we're usually having this time of year.
Because usually we're adding staff.
We might get an extra 100 kids show up on the first day of school.
We still may have that.
That's true, that's true.
To your point, I have not, as a parent, received any communication about any of this. So the only reason I know about it is because I'm on the board and I'm on social media. So I think the numbers might be low. I've talked to six parents off the top of my head I could think of that didn't know we had an online plan yet until I said, yeah, it was released last week, it's on the website, you should go look at it. But we didn't get an email from the school. Are we going to email this out to families?
Yep. It's kind of our next step to start to look into, once we get our plan a little more tight and a little more finalized, and we start to use our usual methods of communication, website, media, social media, and then we will look to email those out to families as well to make sure everybody has that information as we get it more, more complete for everybody as well.
Yeah, I would guess enrollment will go up once families who don't go on social media realize that there is an alternative option. And once we show them what virtual is going to look like, I know there's some hesitation between, well, I don't know what this looks like, should I just go with the homeschool option? And I think explaining to them our funding and that if they want to remain a Lynn Mars family and do our virtual option, it's like we get full funding for that, it keeps the school going. I think that's another part of this conversation that parents are open to once they understand how that works.
I think that it's going to be important for everybody to be flexible. And they, parents may not get a clear picture of what online is going to look like. Like this isn't like you're choosing a college, like we don't have staff and teachers in the buildings yet, like they don't have all of that. So, you know, it may unfortunately have to be like a somewhat blind decision, which is, I mean, it is what it is, and I think that families across the country are facing that because districts across the country are reinventing how students learn. So I do want to give credit to the administrators and the people that have been working tirelessly, like reinventing education repeatedly when a new requirement gets sent to them. And I would just appreciate the public kind of also appreciating that, I guess. I think wanting answers to specific questions like three months in advance, which is an exaggeration for the sake of conversation, is just not something we can do. And I appreciate people wanting to plan their lives more than in two-week chunks, but can we do that? Can anybody be doing that right now? So because we could see a virus spike in four weeks and we're all working from home again. So, I mean, we're all going to have to be flexible, whether it's with school or however it is, so.
Well, I, I agree with you, I agree with you, but I would say that some of us have more flexibility than others.
Very true.
Some of us are able to kind of, you know, feel around in the dark a little bit more than others, you know? I would say to your point just now, you know, if we were coming up with a virtual academy, you know, we would take two and three years to get that started, to get that developed, to get it tested. This is not that, we've had a few months to do that, and so I, I hope that parents will be flexible, you know, understanding, you know, we're going to kind of be doing a lot of this, figuring it out as we go along, kind of thing. So.
I think it's more just wanting to know, you know, is, is it structured? Is there a set time they're going to meet? Is it more flex, like more of an outline of what it's going to look like, not specifically what are they going to learn? Or, you know, just an idea, am I, am I committing to sitting with my child at their laptop for six hours a day? Or like what are they committing to? I think just a general framework is, is kind of what people are looking for to make that choice.
Yeah, I think the basic parameters there, we can provide some more guidance to in the upcoming weeks, and then there will be some pieces of it will be much closer to the start of the year or as the year evolves.
Right.
Yeah, I think people need to, we need to give them a little more clear guidance on what that actually does look like to start with though, I think, too, as long as they understand the details are going to be missing.
Tim, I believe it's your turn.
Right. I would echo, I think, Rachel's comments about mandatory face coverings. I'm, I'm a little nervous about the, I've seen some language about if you're over six feet, you can take it off. I, I would just say let's, except, except where you say there's going to be times to take it off, I would say it's just mandatory, must wear it. I wouldn't be in favor of that. Second thing is, you talked about, and I know you've talked offline of this, about metrics from the state and DE, but I would also continue to talk to Lynn County Health. I, I kind of trust them a little bit more than I would trust the state right now personally. So I think talking with them and getting their information would be good, especially because I see Lynn County continues to go up where the thing I'm watching, the seven-day average, we're over Johnson County, they've come down, we've gone up. So we're, I think, 15.4 cases per 100,000 as of today, where the state's at 17 and Johnson County's at 12.6, so do that. And then could you just kind of briefly talk about if you're, if you're in an A model, an AB model, and like, and it's an, my kid's an A day and it's a B day, are they, is it, I know they're not in school, but is, is there any requirements on them to do things before they come back to school the next day? I know there's going to be, PK through eight's going to be a little different than high school, but.
Yep. Yep, definitely. Yeah, the PK eight will look different than high school on that AB situation. For elementary, middle school students, it'll be more of a extension of the previous day for them to work on. I won't say homework because it could certainly be some little interesting learning opportunities on their device, different things that they have available to them as well, and then some work to do before they come back the next day. So that would be more of an extension of the previous day and kind of some prep work for the, the few next day as well. High school, looking at it more of a true integrated combination of onsite learning while they're there, but they'll also follow that same loose schedule of, kind of they're doing their blended learning courses at the high school as well, where they have either work to do or asynchronously or synchronous with that as well. So the high school piece will be a little more structured and we're not going to be videotaping courses like we are right now for various safety, security reasons for kids, but there's certainly be some opportunities where teachers will have their device showing a direct, direct instruction lesson that can be recorded and shown to students as well, for them to be learning while they're at home as well. So it'll be a challenge to make that happen. Somebody mentioned trying to create schools for multiple different ways with only a couple of months to try to do that is a daunting task, it'll be a learning process for everybody as we go through that, but that's our, that's our intent right now is, K eight would not be using that online piece as much, it'd be more of an extension for the previous day. And then your question about using Lynn County Public Health, they have been without a doubt our best contact for anything health-related across the state or the CDC or anything else, Lynn County Public Health has been fantastic. We continue to have ongoing conversations with them and updates with them as well. The only limitation they really have is when we get to certain steps that we need to go to the next level of requesting a waiver, we have to go through either Department of Public Health and not the county public health then. So it's multiple tiers of people we need to stay in contact with. Before Metro superintendents, we are in regular contact with Lynn County Public Health at least once a day, if not more, on questions, updates as well. Yep, so they have been, can't say enough good things about how, how they have been to work with.
I would like to just add from many of the things that you've all talked about with concerns or things I wanted to mention. I agree with the mandatory wearing of the masks as much as possible, and I think if the children are taught from the beginning what is expected, just like anytime setting up rules for your room. I also taught second grade for a long time and realized that there will be some definite learning curve going on before it totally is effective. So I think we ought to be a little flexible as we do all the way around. The other thing is, I do like that we're having a soft start, I do like the virtual learning. I think parts of that are really good, the elementary and on from there. I just want us to make sure, and I know you said there's just going to be an update on what our guidelines and our metrics that we'll be looking at will be coming next week, you hope? I think it's really important that we look at those and keep kind of thinking out, where does this look like this is going? Like, I know that you do, but just to continue to do that, it's very important, I think, we think ahead and, and anticipate, oh my goodness, we've done all this planning this way and now we're going to have to turn around and do this other thing, which may happen. So I would just like to know, as soon as you know, some updated things that we are kept abreast of that as to what, what we're doing. I just think that everyone involved in all of these plans in this district has done a phenomenal job, job of putting things together and looking and redoing and rethinking, and I really like the way everyone here tonight has expressed their concerns and the things they think that are going forward, and thank you, Shannon, for your explanation. At this point, I would like to go around and have each of us just state, yes, at this point where Shannon is saying that he would like to lead us, that we're okay with it, any little quirky things that you want to make sure, make sure you do this or make sure you do that, please state it, and then we'll go from there. That way he will have a clear direction of where he, where he believes the board wants us to go. So we're going to go in reverse. Tim, we're going to have to put you out there.
So I guess I would echo what Sandra said. I like the, you guys have thought through this and come up with a, some tweaks, I'll call it, to the plan. I like the soft start, but kind of listening today, I guess I would lean towards maybe extending the PK through eight longer. You know, I think giving parents extra time to be able to plan for it. I like the, I like the, what you're doing in the high school, I like the two weeks, but kind of coming in here, I kind of listen to everybody. I would encourage us to look at it going longer, might be easier than, than if we get two weeks out or a week out and then have to change, it might, might be good. You know, I like what you're doing with the, you know, manage, with the face coverings and kind of thinking through things and changing and talking to the different departments of state, so, and the Lynn County Health, so. That's it. I was waiting, I thought I had a lot of time.
Surprise, surprise. Kira?
I think that the soft start concept is a good one. I think once we have more information from the government agencies, that would be very helpful. And then if it would be possible to communicate this to the community, that this is what we're going for, please opt for virtual learning if this is what you're thinking of doing. And then if we continue to see like lower-than-expected enrollment in virtual learning, then maybe we can explore the need to extend it with more notice than just the two weeks. Because we may like sit here and discuss and say that we need to do this for the full first quarter for K through eight, and then some of the classrooms have eight children in it and they're only going every other day, and then we've got like four kids or something. So I think if we had a better grasp of how many kids we're going to be doing online, that would make it a lot easier to kind of come down one way or the other for the K through eight for two weeks versus a quarter.
Okay. Great.
I'm going to agree with Tim. I think that we should give parents more time and commit all of our buildings to first quarter for hybrid. I think it's the safer option and just gives us more time to see where our numbers go. And even if we do have a large portion opting for virtual learning, I think that makes our buildings even safer. So I'm still on board with, I'm, I'm happy with the soft start, but I think we should extend that soft start for the first quarter. I agree with the mandatory masks. I think we need to share, I've had a lot of questions about how that's going to be enforced, so making sure that we share that, make sure that parents can, you know, that they're on board and they explain that to their kids, so it's not just a tough school thing, it's coming from home as well, those are the expectations. I think you've all done a phenomenal job with an impossible task, and so I commend all the work that you guys have done. I think this is a great, we've come a long way in two weeks, and I'm very happy with how the hybrid looks. I do have, you know, more questions about specials and things that we can talk about later, but as a format, I think this is the right way to go.
Rachel?
I just want to say, first of all, that this has been incredibly difficult, knowing what the right decision is. It doesn't feel like there is a right decision. It feels like we have sort of all of these competing interests that we're trying to balance, and, and that feels like an impossible task. And, you know, I was saying to Barry earlier that I- And, you know, I was saying to Barry earlier that I haven't recently got my degree in epidemiology, so I don't, you know, I'm, I'm doing this. You know what I mean? I'm watching the same news as everybody else and trying to make those decisions, and I, I wish that our leadership, not at the building level, but at, you know, maybe the county and state level, had taken more responsibility for these decisions instead of sending it down to us. I, I hear what Kara's saying, and I'm, I'm not opposed to kind of letting, letting, waiting for some final numbers in terms of how many kids are going virtual and how many kids are planning to attend in person in order to make a decision on whether or not we do a soft start for two weeks or we extend that further. I just, I still feel just a little bit, I don't know, a little bit, just trying to understand the rationale behind it a little bit more so that I could give a better answer as far as whether we should extend or not. And to Tim's point, I just think the masks have to be 100% required, except for certain things like eating, but, you know, whether you're 12 feet apart or four feet apart, everybody should be wearing them, so that's it.
And Barry?
Last week, when Shannon called us and ruled this out, to me, I was absolutely ecstatic with the soft opening piece of it, because it's rolling into, rolling out of last year. We didn't really close the year out, so some of the kids are going to be on edge. All of the buildings are going to be different. The teachers, the staff, everybody's going to be working through it. So I was thrilled to see that. So, so as I said earlier, my opinion would be to get as many children back in school as soon as we can, and I would be a proponent of Labor Day weekend coming back full force. And because, and with that said, all parents still have a choice, and the leadership team is rolling out a number of wonderful choices. And if we use the masks and do the things we're supposed to do, that'll probably be the education piece, yet more so for parents than it will be for the children, I think, because the children will follow with their friends. Sometimes from home, they might not get what they want, so. So my opinion would be get the kids back in school.
All right. Thank you. And for me, I, I feel like, excuse me, the soft start is a great way to go. I love that we're having masks for everyone, should be encouraged. The soft start, whether it's continued or not, we have to look for the metrics that are coming forth from the health department and all that. It's not a bad idea, as far as I'm concerned, to continue that through first quarter like the high school, but that I will leave up to those who are looking at all of the data and get back with us from there, so. Is there anyone that would like to say anything else? Hey, I appreciate everyone coming and being, you know, straightforward about all of this. Shannon, would you like to close?
Yeah, I'd like to just make sure, kind of summarize what I think I'm hearing from everybody in general. Strong statement for the masks, face coverings in general, masks as well, which is great to hear. That's something that we've, 26, eight weeks ago, the cabinet and leadership team, we spent a lot of time talking that through, should you, should you not? And the longer times going on, we've kind of reaffirmed that was the right decision from our perspective, so it's nice to hear that from a more prospective as well. The soft start concept sounds like it's strong for that piece, more of a matter of how long becomes the issue, more of the question right now. So my thinking on that is, we're supposed to get new information next week from the DE on some guidance, will give us a couple more weeks to monitor numbers. We come back again as a, as a board August 10th, it'd be a great time for us to revisit it at that time. So then it's not really a matter of, are we going to start the year like that, but it's a matter of what's fair for, how long do we want to let families know what our plans are at that stage? We can revisit it at that time for the length of the time as well. I appreciate your direction for us right now, because it's, like I said, we've got four weeks till kids come, and we're going to need every one of those days to be ready and to be as effective as we can, and we need to stop planning all the hypotheticals, and we need to really start digging into, here's what's going to look like for teachers and for kids and for each building, and our buildings are ready to really take that next step and dig into that. And then the final thing I'll just kind of leave is, I've really thought this through the last week or two since the governor's statement, really, we're down to two options. We're down to either a hybrid of AB, which is what we're choosing to do, or we're onsite. We don't have any other options in our arsenal to pick from right now. So we're picking the safest one to start with, and then it becomes a matter of how do we adjust from there, how do we make decisions? That's where our data, we'll have to really rely on the experts to help with that part. So I think we have a really good place to start, and then it becomes a matter of how do we implement or adjust from there. So if we start in the soft start and our numbers get better, and we're able to go to full onsite at levels, whether it's elementary, middle school, or eventually high school, but then the numbers get worse, at least the hybrid then is a familiar spot for people to go back to, so we shouldn't have to mess with people too many times on, hey, we're doing this, and then we're going to try this. There's really two options, or if the governor dictates the online, that'd be a different scenario, I guess. So, so I think we've got our options pretty well clarified, now it's just a matter of getting the details figured out and ironed out and ready to go so we can get off to a good start for everybody. So I appreciate your feedback and your time. And like Rachel said, this is not any of our expertise, but it's still our responsibility to make these decisions and make the best of it, so. So I appreciate the direction for today. What we will then do is, we'll start to work on our communications, we'll clean up our plans, we'll update them, and we'll start to share them with everybody as well, is to get, so everybody knows where we stand as we start the school year. So. That's all I have, thank you.
We appreciate that. All right, so from here, adjournment, I believe?
I make a motion to adjourn the special session at 5:56 PM.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? We are adjourned.